I'm Peter Brown from Tiny and Sons Glass. Tiny and Sons Glass was established in 1978 when my father and brother and I. We're at 575 Washington Street in Pembroke. We're certified and qualified to do our windshield replacement and repair. Tiny and Sons Glass is a community-based business. We have 12 mobile vans that'll come to you. If the weather's bad, you can come here to the shop. We have a nice waiting area, TV, Wi-Fi, kid-friendly, pet-friendly. We also can move about 15, 20 cars a day through the shop. Perfect for you when the weather's bad. So come on down to Tiny and Sons Glass if you need your windshield replaced or repaired. Tiny and Sons Glass, 1-888-64-TINYS. Just call. Thank you.
First up on our schedule, we have a joint appointment with Advisory Committee for our request to appoint Matthew Norton of 15 Wintergreen Farm to the vacancy. Welcome.
Thank you for having us. I would like to move Matthew Norton to a three-year term on the Advisory Committee. We're going to have him fill Jim McCollum's seat. So you're still, that's, you're still there to work at?
I'm trying, sir.
I believe that this one is just a single vote of the chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So as Chairman of the Advisory, I vote in favor of Matthew Norton.
So I just, I vote on this one?
Yep.
I vote yes as well.
Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard. Thank you for coming in.
You've been on recreation for how long?
Yeah, so I've been a resident of Pembroke for around 22 years and been on recreation for 12 years, just stepped down this past summertime. I was on the CPC for four years before that or during that time. Did youth sports volunteering with hockey and all the other stuff and everything. So now ready to tackle some bigger decisions. But thank you very much. I applaud you.
Best of luck.
Thanks. Thank you.
Next up, we have a meeting with Kyle Harney.
I just wanted to take a moment on behalf of the Pembroke Celebrates Committee to thank the selectmen for their continued support for our endeavor each year. This year, I don't know if you heard, we had a really great turnout. It was amazing. And we had no F-word. You know, OJ, F-OJ. We didn't have any of that, so we had a perfectly great, you know, display of fireworks. And in addition to that, I think it probably had about 3,000 people there. It was really something. So this is really starting to become a really annual event. I'm really proud of it. And it's not, it's in no small part because of your support and the rest of the members. So thank you.
And Kyle, do you have anything to say for any future events for Pembroke Celebrates?
Well, the next Pembroke Celebrates is going to be the, the next Pembroke Celebrates activity will be the tree lighting. And that's going to be happening as usual, the first Sunday, you know, the center. But it's a haunted house out in Washington, that's the name of the stadium. Just to be there, you know, honestly. But, you know, we appreciate your continued support. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you for coming in. And I wasn't able to attend the event, but I did see the fireworks online through Facebook live stream. They're very nice. So I'll appreciate that event that they put on. So moving on to the board action items, first of which is a vote to adopt Pembroke's Housing Production Plan.
Mr. Chairman and board members, we'd like to introduce Lisa Sullivan, Principal Planner for the Old Colony Planning Council. Her and her cohort Laura Muncy, who can't be here this evening, a little under the weather. So Lisa's going to do the honors and present the production plan to you folks.
Great, thanks for coming in.
Thank you so much for having me this evening. The housing production plan, we started because Ed applied for our local technical assistance to work on some potential issues. And we said, we pinpointed the housing production plan would get to the most bang for your buck. Because you started one back in early, I think, 2012, and it was never adopted. So we wanted to bring that to fruition.
So if you look at your package, you'll find, and I think Lisa also gave out a color copy of the-
Yes, the presentation. So you have a color copy of the presentation, and you have a digital copy of the 118-page housing production plan. And I did bring a few copies of the spot around copies to your library. Okay, so what is a housing production plan? It's a strategy for planning and developing housing to meet community needs and also helps you meet the 10% target set for each community across the Commonwealth through Chapter 40B. So HPPs are required to have three elements. It's an assessment of the town's housing needs, the goals to assist with meeting those needs, and strategies toward achieving the goals. What's in Pembroke's HPP? It's got regional context, so it talks about communities that are adjacent to you, Plymouth County and the state of Massachusetts. It has statistical information, mapping data, and basic census information, demographics, like population, projected population growth, poverty levels, education attainment, things like that. We also held a public process. We did a community survey. It was a brief survey of timed questions. Deborah Wall from your library was very nice to help us with the post on your website. And she put it out there through Facebook and other social media. And about 250 respondents replied. And just to give an idea of where people thought needed more affordable housing and what people, overall what their thoughts were about affordable housing. And the results are in the housing production plan. So why should Pembroke approve the HPP? Well, it's a proactive strategy for meeting your, the 40B statute, getting to 10% and then maintaining it. And once you do get to 10%, you're no longer vulnerable to 40B. You can, you can basically say that you've met your requirements. You can add to, once you're at 10%. And for communities who aren't at 10%, they can request certifications if they're meeting their goals. An approved HPP also puts them in line for additional state funds. This administration and former administrations are very driven to create new housing. And so a lot of grants are tied to creating housing. So you get extra points on maybe Mass Works grants or Complete Street grants for having an approved HPP. There's also a new housing choice initiative, and there's a planning for production initiative as well. So these things all will help. They make more funding available to the community. And also, it's doing our part. Every community's supposed to get up to 10%, and you're very close. So how does the HPP get approved? They're approved by, they're approved by the planning board, adopted and recommended. They would have, they've actually adopted and recommended that you approve. It gets approved by the Board of Selectment, and then finally it gets approved by DPD.
And in your packet there is a letter from the Planning Board Assistant saying that the planning board did-
Yeah, and I have the date. Okay, so you're making real progress towards your 10% target. In 2010, you had 6,477 housing units. Those are year-round housing units that were counted. 10% of your housing stock is supposed to be affordable. So that target is 648 units. And in Pembroke, you've had 616 units as of 9/2017, so September 2017. That was the last date that the SHI was updated on the state website. And I know that Brandon has also recently submitted Copperwood, which is nine units. And he was reviewing to see if there were additional units. And he thinks you're even closer to 10 at this point.
So Copperwood is the 40B project on Bird Street?
So that's not included yet in the numbers. So right now, if the 614 plus the nine is going to bring you to 625. And then we think there may even be a couple of other units that, that are, they don't announce where all of them are. But so some of them are protected through the state, the locations, if there's such housing or things like that. So some highlights from your HPP. Massachusetts home prices were at a U.S. average in, at the U.S. average in 1980, but are now amongst the highest of any state. In recent years, Mass has allowed less new housing construction than at almost any point since the 1950s. That's mostly due to zoning, because we like, they lots. So that keeps zoning and land costs and soaring home values are a barrier to entry into the market. Pembroke's median single-family home price was $360,000 in 2017, which is back to the 2004, 2006 levels. And your condo price is approaching, I think it was $314 back in 2004, 2006, and it's around $299 as of 2017. In Massachusetts, the fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment is $1,740. You're grouped in, Pembroke is grouped in with Boston, Quincy, and Cambridge for your fair market rents and your fair market wages.
The only other one would be Brockton, correct?
Yeah, Brockton is, you're correct. So Bridgewater, Fall River, New Bedford, I believe they're all, West Bridgewater, East Bridgewater are in the Brockton one. To afford the level of rent and utilities without paying more than 30% of income on housing, a household must earn $69,600 annually. Assuming a 40-hour work week, 52 weeks a year, this level of income translates to a housing wage of $33.46 per hour. A minimum wage worker in Mass earns $11 per hour. So to afford the FMR of $1,740 for a two-bedroom apartment, a minimum wage worker must work 122 hours per week, 52 weeks per year. In Massachusetts, the estimated average wage for a renter is $24.12. To afford the FMR two-bedroom apartment at this wage, a renter must work 55 hours per week, 52 weeks per year to make the unit affordable. Or they have to have a roommate, or they have a partner. In Mass, supplemental SSI monthly payment is $864 per month, which means the rent affordable to an SSI recipient is $259 per month. To put it in further, in more context, we're losing population to metro areas that offer better housing choices at a lower cost. So this is migration out. More people are leaving Massachusetts than coming. And they're going to communities like Portland, Oregon, Denver, Seattle, Atlanta, and Dallas, because they have more housing choices at lower costs. A significant share of Pembroke residents pay more than 30% of income for their housing. So if you're paying more than 30% of your income for housing, you're considered cost burdened. If you're paying 50% or more for your housing, you're considered extremely cost burdened. And there are people, both owners and renters, that fall into both of these categories. And the Housing Production Plan does detail that. So more households are eligible for affordable housing than you have units available at this time. So 1,780 of Pembroke's households are eligible for affordable housing. And currently, 9.51% of your housing is actually affordable, so people making 80% of average median income. So average median income for a family of four in the Boston, Cambridge, Quincy area is $107,000. And an average family of four, to be at 80% of AMI, it's $81,100 for a family of four. So just think, that could be your firefighters, your police officers, your schoolteachers. So two wage earners with two children. And they probably may qualify for 80% of AMI housing. Elderly residents, single mothers with families, and young professionals and young families are disproportionately cost burdened. Elderly residents have few housing options for downsizing and remaining in the community. And MAPC, which is one of the planning councils, also a regional planning agency, they do estimates going up to 2030 socioeconomic estimates based on a strong region scenario and a status quo scenario to predict what volume and growth will be. And they're predicting that Pembroke will need another 1,700 additional elderly householders in Pembroke. There will be 1,700 additional elderly householders in Pembroke for 2030, and you'll need more housing units for them to live in. So the number of households in Pembroke will continue to grow, but the barriers to entry, whether as renters or owners, are very high. So what can we do about that? The goals and strategy in the plan are to meet the 10% state standard for affordable housing, so that Pembroke is no longer vulnerable to Chapter 40B, to create and maintain a level of total affordable housing that equals 10% of total housing units. Now, what, this becomes very important, because your housing units are based on the 2010 census, and there'll be a new census in 2020, and your number of housing units is going to have grown, correct? So you'll, you have more affordable units, but you also have more growth. And so you need to kind of keep up with that. So it's kind of a balancing act. Another strategy is to establish a municipal affordable housing trust to create affordable housing units through adaptive reuse of existing buildings and town-owned properties, like perhaps like a community center or an old school. You could do mixed-use development or leverage community preservation funds by doing a recreation component and affordable housing component, things like that. Maybe adopt an inclusionary zoning by law. Inclusionary zoning is a strategy where you kind of put a lot of the burden to develop affordable housing back on the developers. You might request, if you've developed that by law, you might request that they create 25% of a subdivision to be affordable units. Or if they don't want to create affordable units, and they're creating a smaller subdivision, maybe they would do an in lieu of bonus payment that would go into an affordable housing trust. And you might use those funds to create affordable housing, like at the, maybe at the community center or a former school or a tax title property. So that would help fund what is a very expensive mechanism, creating affordable housing. And then you want to promote diversity of housing options in Pembroke to meet the needs of a changing and aging population, and promote a socio-economically diverse population, and prioritize affordable housing on infill development and abandon the vacant properties. So those are your goals and strategies in brief. So we sent this to the town first on June 13th. I attended a planning board meeting on July 9th, and I attended again August 27th, where the planning board voted to adopt the HPP. And I'm here respectfully requesting that you vote to adopt it. And just so you know, the strategies, there's strategies and goals. There's nothing in the, in the HPP is binding, okay? So it might suggest you create an affordable housing trust, or suggests that you adopt inclusionary zoning, but those aren't requirements. They're just suggestions. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming in and putting forth this housing production plan. For the folks listening at home, the point behind this is that we get up to 10% affordable housing in town. So do we need a vote on this thing?
And this is a very proactive, and as you remember from our conversation with our attorney the other evening, he mentioned a housing production plan and how important it was, so.
And do we have lands available where we could perhaps get an RFP together for a friendly 40B?
Yeah, and I think that Andrew Sullivan is going to be in front of the board fairly soon about the plan to create some mixed-use development in and around the community center project. And that would be a prime example of a, of an active, proactive 40B project that would be on town-owned land. And I think you, also on your warrant, there are parcels that are on the special town meeting warrants that are going to be designated to the Board of Selectment from Kathleen McCarthy, our treasure collector, and some that are going to go to conservation as open space. So there may be some parcels in there. And as usual, Kathleen's got, you know, six or seven that are buildable lots, that either have a home or a building on it, or that are buildable. And so she'll be in front of the board when she puts her package together as well. So there could be a couple of opportunities there for the town to do that.
Sounds very good. Do we need a vote on this tonight?
We would appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the housing production plan for the town of Pembroke as presented.
Thank you.
All right, has been a motion of second. All is in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
I would.
Oh, okay. So that passes. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, this is for you and Laurie's work on this. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. We look forward to working with Pembroke in the future on different projects.
Definitely. Thank you.
All righty, so next up, we have a request for road closure for a block party on Edgewater Drive, October 21st, 2018, from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Pretty quick party. Thank you for coming in.
Hi.
It's four hours. Come on.
Yeah, a lot of homes in my neighborhood have sold, and there's a lot of new people in the neighborhood. But also, there's a lot of older people in the neighborhood you don't see often. So I wanted to have a block party and bring back the block party, because I guess they used to have one. And meet everybody and get some community spirit coming. And blocking out the roads would make it safer for kids. And it's not going to block out anybody, because no one's, it's not going to interfere with traffic.
I think it's a great idea. Ed, did the police chief already approve this?
No, you've got a motion, a suggestive motion, that includes pending the approval of the police fire and the DPW.
Ah, yes.
I did call that when he recommended I come to you guys.
No problem.
It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun, the block parties.
Yeah, I got a, I'd like to get a bouncy house, put the Patriots game on, have the kids ride their bikes. It's a big playdate, basically. Come on back.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the request of Kathleen Toley, 154 Edgewater Drive, for a road closure for part of Edgewater Drive from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM on October 21st, 2008, pending the approval of the Police Department, Fire Department, and the DPW.
All righty, motion of second. All is in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. So that passes. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
And Ed or Sabrina will assist you with the next steps. Right, Ed? That's how that typically goes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, what you have is a submission by Community Paradigm Associates. They submitted a proposal to do our capital improvements plan. When Mr. Buckley, the town accountant, went in front of the advisory a couple of months ago to ask for some supplemental funds to do the capital improvements plan as, you know, to supplement the leftover community compact grant that we didn't spend for the long-term forecasting. The, even though we already had a proposal, the advisory had asked that we would shop around. And so Brandon from, from our office went ahead and- ... that do this kind of work, including the MMA, Bridgewater State, UMass Boston, Community Paradigm, and I believe there were one or two others. The only positive responses that we got were from Community and from UMass Boston. We interviewed both firms last week. The team was made up of Kathleen McCarthy, Mike Buckley, Brandy Gulnick, and myself. And the recommendation that we'd make is to approve the proposal by Community Paradigm. What's interesting about it is that all the gentlemen that we interviewed for the project were all ex-town managers. So, you know, we had the ex-manager from Easton, the ex from Marshfield-Duxbury, the ex-city manager Lowell in Chelmsford, and then the ex-town manager of Reddit. And so the community folks will have a team of three ex-town managers that will be, that will assist us in all the departments and putting together, and the school department as well, and putting together a five-year capital improvements program. And at a price less than what we had budgeted, so.
Now, this is different from the, what UMass did for us-
That's correct. They'll build upon that.
Okay, that's what I was saying. They're incorporating what UMass has already done to-
Right, and John, we've had this CIP in plan for a number of years, but it wasn't as sophisticated as we'd like. And incorporate the, you know, revenues and, and the meetings that we're going to have with the school department and the various department heads. And the fact that the experience that this firm brings to the table was well worth us going out to, you know, to solicit proposals. So we are recommending that the Board of Selectmen authorize me to sign a contract with this firm.
All right, thank you for that description, Ed. For the folks at home, better understand what this means. This is a plan for how Pembroke's going to budget its capital for the next five years. Is that accurate, Ed?
That's correct.
Maybe you have your next career in mind.
That's right. And another thing, yeah, I guess all town managers don't die, they just turn into consultants, so. And another project that we're going to be looking at is to bring before the board a plan for best practices for fiscal policies, you know, for stabilization funds, for, you know, other situations that would involve funding for, you know, the financial well-being of the town, you know, whether it be capital improvements, OPEB liability funding, and stabilization funding, as well as an amount of money that would be set aside for borrowing each year, and a certain amount of money. So I believe Kathleen McCarthy will be bringing that plan in front of you folks in the immediate future as well.
Now, when that comes up, Ed, will there be alternatives to, if we're trying to improve our best fiscal footing on how to deal with OPEB or, or other avenues instead of that?
Yeah, I think we wanted to get the CIP thing out of the way, and then our next goal will be bringing, putting together a fiscal policy plan of attack to bring before the board.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the recommendation of the town administrator. We got a proposal to provide services all to the development and preparation of the Pembroke capital plan.
I'll second.
All right, has been a motion of second. All is in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye as well, so that passes. Next up, we have a vote on recommendations on routine articles on the special town meeting warrant. And so these are the articles that come up regularly, that are labeled as routine on the warrant that you'll receive at the door if you choose to go. And Ed, if I'm correct, it's typical that these are all read aloud, right?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
All right, so I'll go ahead and read the descriptions of these articles. Article one, to fund the snow and ice deficit to balance the fiscal year '19 budget, and that is for $451,454. Article two is to reduce the tax rate savings due to debt refinancing of $185,478. Wow, you must have got a great deal. On transfer fund, or article three is to transfer funds from solid waste revenue to operating budget, and that's $200,000. Article five is to authorize borrowing to provide that premium received by applied to project costs or to reduce project costs per act to modernize municipal government, and there's no dollars associated with that. Article six is to create a water stabilization account, no dollars. Article seven is to fund the funds, and those are other post-employment liability, accountant recommended $100,000, separation pay benefits accounted recommended $125,000, special injury leave fund, and the recommended amount on that is $25,000, workers' comp, and the recommendation on that is $75,000. And lastly, we have the stabilization fund transfer, and that recommended amount is $25,000. Next up is article nine, the treasurer's request to transfer property to Board of Selectmen, that's seven parcels. Article 10, treasurer's request to transfer property, that's 20 parcels. And lastly, article 12 is to accept provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 59. Article 21, assessor's certification, and that's $0.
Mr. Chairman, before I ask the board to vote on those particular items, I would like to show you and present to you a summary of the funding sources that are available. This is the handout that I- This is the handout that I gave you folks tonight. It's a one-pager, and it deals with how much money is available and what is being recommended for obligated expenses. And so let me start off with that right now. The free cash was certified at $1,734,996, and we're also going to have $103,000 available for overlay surplus from the Board of Assessors. So we have a total of funds available of $1.8 million. Our obligated expenses are in the next category, which is snow and ice, as the chairman mentioned, Tax rate reduction of $185,478. And Mr. Buckley and I are recommending that $600,000 of those available funds be used to fund the 2020 budget. Because right now, we are using $500,000 of FY18 free cash to fund the FY19 budget that we are currently in. And without anything, any money train coming down the road, we would have to expect that we would be spending at least $500,000. And Mr. Buckley is suggesting that we tack on an additional $100,000 for, to be put in reserve for balancing the FY2020 budget. So those are the three obligated expenses. That being said, then we'll have $601,064 available. And then we get down to article seven, which is the various funds that are being recommended by Mr. Buckley that we add, $100,000 to OPEB, $125,000 to separation, special injury fund, $25,000, the workers' comp fund, $75,000, and the general fund stabilization fund of We actually have two stabilization funds. We have one that has been generated by the general fund over the years, and another one as a result of a class action suit that the town joined 10 years ago with the MTBE contamination. It was a class action suit that, you know, that we signed up for, for nothing, and we ended up getting over $900,000 in an award. And this was as a result of a lawsuit filed against all of the oil companies in the country for contamination of water supplies. And when ExxonMobil and all the other big ones ended up settling the lawsuit, we became part of that settlement. And we received that money, and it's been sitting in a special stabilization fund to be used for any general purposes. Obviously, it would have to be authorized by a town meeting, but we have that in there right now. And, and the good thing about it is that we got that money, and not one of our wells was contaminated by this additive that was put into gasoline 20 years ago. So, you know, that was a good situation where, you know, we joined up in a class action suit for nothing, and we ended up getting close to a million dollars. So we had that, you know, set aside. I know that when we received that award, I know a couple of the towns in the area just asked me that, "How did you get that money?" And I said, "Well, we signed up for it, just like the OPEB law's litigation that you folks signed up for." You know, "It didn't cost you anything, and you may get, you know, a cash award for that." So, so we'll see how that goes. So, that being said, after all those funds are accounted for, then we have about $251,000 in funds that are available. And you'll be dealing with the next, the next set of articles. Next week, that's article four, which is the large article that has probably 20 different requests in various departments, and that's equal to $328,000. You have article 13, which is requested by the police chief for overtime, and that's worth $160,000. Two police officers, and article 14 is worth $77,000. And in article 15, the recreation director is asking for $20,000 to help fund a full-time custodian in their office. And, and I'll be having those folks in front of the board next week to explain why they want that kind of money. If we funded article four, 13, 14, and 15, then we would have a deficit of $335,000. So obviously, we're going to have to make some hard decisions regarding article, well, even the article 70, all the funds, and article four, 13, 14, and 15.
Well, thanks for that great description, Ed. And just so the folks at home know, the, this, this action before the board is only for the articles that I had mentioned earlier. Ed, can these be taken as a whole, or do they need to be separated out one by one?
Um, well, you, you could look at whether or not you want to do all of them, or do some of them and keep the others available for discussion when you have a full board.
Very, very good. Since these are all customary articles, I think it'd be good to go ahead and take them all as a whole if John and you, I agree with that?
I agree, Mr. Chairman, and I think you're finding the hinges dealt here, the three of us to vote on it. We have a little time to reflect on them. So I would move that the Selectmen support articles one, two, three, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 12.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, has been a motion of second all is in favor?
Aye.
Everybody aye as well, so those should get recommended unanimously. So that concludes the board action as of tonight. We'll go ahead and move on to old business. Did anybody have anything for that tonight?
Well, I could put this under old business, I suppose.
Sure.
The three-on-three basketball tournament in name of Brian Van Reipah went off this weekend. It was a first effort by his sons who wanted to create a memorial to a fellow who was very instrumental in getting the basketball and tennis courts up and the lights and so forth behind the police station in this town center. And it was a great success. They also planted a tree that they got help from the DPW, not only in picking it up but in delivering it, because you rarely think of trees as something that you have to move. But it required some talent, and the DPW had that talent, and we're very grateful to them. But it does, success breeds success, so they're going to do it again in the spring. And there's got to be an over-60 division because I played with some younger guys, and I won't be the same for a couple of weeks. And I have to say, too, Joel Sugarman played, and did a nice job as the representative of the over-60 crowd as well. And just for the facts being what they are, last week we had a kind of a controversial appointment to the Conservation Commission. And there was a reference made that the former chair had taken 15 meetings off or something like that, and it's nowhere near that number as far as I can tell. And it was because she had a family member with an illness that had to be dealt with. And I think she did the right thing. She resigned from the board, as much as you hate to lose people, but, you know, there was nothing behind it that was clandestine or what have you. It's a question of, you had a conscientious, you know, member of the household making a decision based on their feelings, they should make family first. So I just want to let the public know that there is any doubt as to the character of this person, or the intent of her, you know, her being on the board. It's all, you know, it's all good. She's, she has resigned, and we'll, we'll move on, and I just wish her well.
Well, thank you for that report. John, did you have anything?
Good tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, so go ahead and move on to the town administrator's report.
Just a couple of things to be aware of. We're going to be looking at the board to submit a, a letter to the governor regarding the $3 million that was set aside for the downtown revitalization project. Let the board discuss that for the next couple of weeks. And I believe Andrew Sullivan from the Community Center Committee is going to be in front of the, the board to, to update the board on this proposed plan. Obviously, you know, we dealt with the, the capital improvements plan, and then on your upcoming issues, you're going to be dealing and working with the ADA transition plan and the project evaluation that we've got coming. And I believe Brian Gulick from, from my office will be presenting that as well. And then in addition to upcoming issues, November 5th, we don't have it down here, but we just received a request from the assessors today that they want to set aside November 5th as the tax classification hearing, and that's where the Board of Assessors along with the Selectmen will set the tax rate for FY19.
Very good. Thank you for that report. Next up, we have asked the Selectmen, anything for that tonight? Hear none? Go ahead and move on to new business.
I had some new business as of last week, and I should have reported it to you then, but John took a, a ride along Little Sandy to get familiar with the pond, and, you know, you have to live there to know some of the nuances of it, and he took the time and made the effort to come down and, you know, see what the neighbors were talking about in terms of, you know, the drop in the water levels and, you know, the, the wildlife that we have, some welcome, some unwelcome, like Canadian geese. But I think John can speak better for himself, but I think he got a, an eyeful of what it's like on, on the ponds and what jewels they are of the community.
Yeah, and I thank my, my colleague, Mr. Boyle, for letting me go on the pond and figure out the history of it and see who was still there from years past and, you know, who's coming in to live on the ponds now. And it was a definite big eye-opener, especially what, you know, I always look when I drive by, the water levels, so basically Little Sandy compared to the other ones because that is more of an access point to look by when you go down 27. So, but I do thank you for allowing me to do that and my other colleagues to show me what Pembroke is about and what we can do to improve. So I appreciate it.
I think your point of, you know, second and third generation families make it a kind of special community, and that was something that you noticed right off, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you, Arthur.
Yeah, I'll agree that Little Sandy truly is a jewel of the community. So next up, we have upcoming issues. On September 24th, we'll have a vote to adopt the ADA transition plan, self-evaluation and grievance plan. On October 1st, we'll be signing the special town meeting warrant to post October 9th. October 8th, there'll be no meeting in observance of Columbus Day. On October 23rd, the special fall town meeting will take place at 7:00 PM at the high school. On November 19th, the Class 1, Class 21, and Taxi Precious Metals license renewal will take place. And on November 26th, there'll be no meeting for Thanksgiving. On December 3rd, the Common Vic Dular license renewals will take place. Maybe we can rename that. On December 10th, liquor license, live entertainment, Sunday amusement device license renewals will take place. On December 10th, we will set the winter break schedule, and December 17th, we will discuss the Selectmen's 2019 calendar. There's a lot on the plate. Ed, is there any for executive sessions tonight?
Well, I would prefer that we have a full board for a couple of the items, and the one dealing with the DPW meeting grievances been rescheduled to next Monday. So I would not recommend any executive session tonight.
I think that's a prudent decision. So that concludes the agenda. And the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board is September 24th, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, with that said, I would move that we adjourn.
Second.
There's been a motion of second all is in favor?
Aye.
Everybody aye as well, so that concludes this meeting. Thank you for tuning in.